There you go.
We're going. This is the City Council Finance Subcommittee for November 24th. Minutes of the prior meeting of November 12th. JP, I know I had a chance to read them. I don't know if you did. Dan sent them today, earlier today.
I did not actually.
I studied them.
We can either wait until the next meeting or I'll make a motion if you're comfortable.
I'm comfortable. He doesn't like them. He can move a motion to a man next week.
I'll make a motion now we approve the minutes from November 12th. We have a motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye and one of...
Two, zero.
I was on the road all day.
No, no.
I didn't get a chance.
They came in during the day. Mayor's communication. You're good. Public speak.
There's no publics here.
Well, okay. I guess we should start with Tina because she gave up her mother's birthday party as I would go. We could put you at the end, but...
You're making us feel really guilty.
I haven't started yet.
I guess where we left off is councilors were looking to go through the stuff, which I tried to as much as I could ascertain. And also, we were going to try to get, I know the council risk particularly was looking for a little guidance from the mayor and finance director on costs, additional costs. I know Melissa provided the 2% and what that would be projected over the thing. And I don't know if you have anything more, Tina, that...
Do you have anything else now that tells us what it's going to cost?
Yeah, it costs a lot of money.
You can't put a figure on it.
Well, like I said, it continues with the normal cost, which is beyond the scope of the unfunded liability. To the end of the unfunded liability, it's over a million dollars.
This is projected out. Is this for when?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight?
Over a million beyond the unfunded liability.
It doesn't change the unfunded liability by that much, but that's the increase in the appropriation for the next fourteen years.
So, I take it by that. I put you on the spot. You don't feel comfortable with making this change right now?
That's not what I said. You asked me for a number. I gave it to you.
There seemed to be an implication. Okay. Do you have an opinion on that? I mean, I trust you guys. You think we can't afford it? We can't afford it. Mayor? It's a tough call. I know that. But we have to make a decision too. So...
Well, it might be helpful. Well, you know, again, it's going back to like, you know, COLAs are the cost of doing business. Can you afford them? No, do we have to do them? Yes. So, it might be helpful if Melissa fills you in on, you know, as a member of the retirement board, you know, because it was unanimous. It was a unanimous vote of the retirement board. So, you know, maybe some of the discussion that happened there. But of course, at the same end, you know, it's us funding it, you know?
Well, let me make it clear. I think the retirees deserve it. That's not the point.
Right. And I don't think any of us have any questions at all regarding, you know, the COLAs for the retirees. But I think the question that, I think what we're going through here is increasing the base. It's not the COLA itself, because as you know, that's the whole point. The COLA itself is only based right now on the first, on the 12,000. So, if you're somebody getting, you know, it doesn't matter how much your retirement is, you're only getting the COLA on that 12,000.
That's important.
If you're lucky enough to be getting 50,000 for retirement, you're getting the COLA on the 12. So, you're raising the base, which raises, you know, so I don't think... But again, when the COLAs are put through, no one has any problems with the COLAs themselves. I think everybody is in the same boat on that. But this is a separate issue. The way I look at it is it's not the COLA. This is raising the base from the 12 to the 14. So, it has, you know, a lot more power to the impact.
You know, we turned them down in 2010. And just, and I'm not saying this is a necessary compromise. Is, Melissa, would the figure going out if we went to 13 rather than 14, would that be half of the million? Or would, is it figured out differently where it wouldn't be?
I don't believe it's exactly half. I don't, we didn't... The reason I know what the number is is we had a projection with it and without.
I see.
I see.
Okay. Oh, so that would be very helpful to the finance if you have the without and the with?
It doesn't matter. We're paying the appropriation for next year anyway.
Now, I guess my question is, this was already voted unanimously by the retirement board. So, what would happen? It's the councilor's choice to not, to not change, you know, the funding part so that it wouldn't end up happening, correct?
No. We would still fund it as if we were paying it next year. We just couldn't pay it. And any additional contribution would be rolled into the evaluation for the next actuarial.
By that, you mean it would, you'd reduce the unfunded liability by that amount?
By any extra...
By the amount that would have gone to the employees?
Correct.
Would go to the unfunded liability reduction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's not just going to disappear or float out till next year. It's going to be applied to unfunded liability.
So, light's on in here. We're paying this out either toward the unfunded liability or toward the retirees.
Because it was budgeted.
Right.
For two years.
For two years. So, if we decide not to approve this, it gets funded toward the unfunded liability, reducing that. If we decide to fund it, what I think Melissa just said was we're, we're a million dollars over, and what is it, 2028 or whenever that happens, we're a million, this is going to add a million dollars to the unfunded liability eventually?
It's going to add...
Over fourteen years.
Over time.
Over fourteen years.
Right.
Yeah, over next fourteen years. I even wrote that down. That's enlightened. So, we're already paying it. The difference is...
It's already been budgeted.
Right. So, it's not like for the next two years. If we say no to this, if we say no to this, you can come back in two years and do it again, ask us again. How does that work? I mean, you budgeted it because you knew the retirees had asked for it.
We didn't budget it.
If we didn't budget it and we asked for it and you said yes, then we have to wait two years in order to budget it.
I got it.
So...
This is government wonderful.
It would be, it would be...
We'd be further behind the...
Right. And we'd have to, the increase would be much higher than the 8% increase.
But when you guys budgeted, mayor has to fund it, still has to fund it, right?
It's funded out of the...
You, no. It's sort of, you have to pay.
You being...
The city.
The city.
Right. You have to pay it for the next two years. That's what I mean. You have to pay it. And it's in our budget plan right now for next year, for fiscal 2015.
It didn't change for next year, for fiscal FY15. It has not changed from the previous actuarial that was done. It's the following year that is going to change.
Okay.
So, next year, yeah, the next, the next year's appropriation, which is due in July of next year, 2015, is already, is already been budgeted three years ago. That's what the same figure is. It's the following year, FY16, that's going to go up.
But in 15, that money is either going to go to the retirees or go to the unfunded liability because it's already budgeted. It's going to happen. It's in the pipeline to go somewhere. That's the correct statement? I'm understanding this better.
Slowly.
All right. It's hard. This is really hard for me. I'm not a, I'm not a...
It is confusing. Just for clarification purposes, the $2,000 increase... Right now, we're talking about the base. The base is 12,000.
Right.
That's the amount of money that any COLAs are based upon. That's what we're voting on, is that the COLA is based on 12, is currently on 12,000. And the question is, should the COLA be based on, in the future?
Go up to 14?
Go up to be based on 14,000, a difference of 2,000? No. Whatever the percentage difference is in the COLA, if the COLA is 1%, then it'd be...
It's 3%, right?
Typically 3%.
Typically 3%. 3% of the $2,000 per employee or about 60 dollars...
It's 60 dollars per...
For the retirees. About 60 dollars.
Of the ones that are over 14.
That are over 14. Those that are 6,000 or 7,000 or 8,000, this doesn't apply to them at all.
They're going to get 3% of theirs. Tina, what was the...
Those are the people that really need it.
Those are the ones that really need it.
That really need the help.
It's true.
And not that the people who are getting 13 or 14 don't need the help. They need the help too.
They'll get an additional $5 a month.
Yeah.
Who doesn't?
If the COLA base goes up, that means that they will get an additional $5 per month over the people earning over 14. If you go to 13, you're only going to get $2.50 exactly.
Aside from the COLA, Tina, at the board, did you discuss the unfunded liability? In other words, was the board concerned? I mean, it seems like it's gone down.
It's gone down at least $3 million since the last actuarial that was done. And part of it is the appropriation that was already paid and part of it is that our assets are doing much better. You know, we've earned well over the 8%. I think it was like 13 one year, 15 the next year, 13.2 or 15.2, something like that. So, but the assumption for the actuarial is on 7.75. But if we do better than that, then it changes the unfunded liability.
It helps it if we do worse it, the unfunded liability.
They used to be 8% forever, ever, never, but because of, I guess, the most recent market averages, they decided to be slightly more conservative at PERACT. That's not something that Tina or the board decides. That's something that comes from PERACT.
They lowered that thing for me, or what, the projection from 8 to 7, 7.5?
I have a hard time, councilors, saying no to $5 a month.
I...
This is ridiculous.
I mean, that puts it really down into the nitty gritty to me. $5 a month is nothing. Now, I know with all our retirees, and year after year, it adds up. But still, they haven't had any increase. They get COLAs now, but the base hasn't increased so that this adds $5 a month. They're still getting increases, but this adds $5 a month to that increase.
That's what I was going to ask you, by the way, the base of the, like ours is 12,000 now. Is that the minimum?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so there is no, I mean, we're 12, but there's nobody that's 8 or 10?
No. In 1997, it changed from 9,000 to 12,000.
To 12, okay. And this sheet is really helpful too, with all the different bases on it. Now, the ones that don't have anything filled in, are they up at 12?
There's another sheet, Mayor, that I think shows which towns are...
There's two of them.
Yeah. One shows which towns are at 12, which ones are at...
The increase is in effect, this one.
I don't think you have this one there.
Oh, no, I don't have it.
Which ones are at 12, which ones are at 13, 14, 15 to 18?
Yeah, this is good.
Right. So, you know, like in...
Oh, wow.
This area, some of them, a lot of them are at 13, like Hampshire County, North Hampton, Westfield, West Springfield, the teachers, because they're in the state, they're at 13.
13, yeah.
But then there's also Pittsfield and some towns that probably aren't as well as us in Adams that are at 14.
Adams, they're at 13 or 14, I think. But I just got a notification in the mail, in the email today, the state that governs or that pays attention to who's got what, they just sent out an email saying, has anybody changed theirs since, you know, last year or recently or whatever?
There might be some that have changed.
Might be some change.
That I don't know.
Yeah, because the majority is at 12. I guess that kind of surprises me a little.
And then you got Hampton County and Montague, which are up at 18.
Yeah, I guess they're rich now.
They must be rich now. Not sure.
No, I was surprised to see like, you know, like some very affluent ones.
If we approve this, Tina, when would be the next time that you, the board could come? Not you, I don't mean to put it on you. I say you, the whole board. So, this would be locked for at least two years? I mean, you couldn't come back?
It would be, yes, the $14,000, that wouldn't change and we probably wouldn't ask for quite some time again because that's, that's a big deal. And when we would be allowed to give this COLA would be July 1st, 2015.
Right.
If I understand it, this hasn't been raised since 97?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that. That was the, it was brought up before though.
And that was stated to you here.
It wasn't 2010.
It was, okay, so...
We were asked in 2010 and we said no.
So, 97 was the last time it was changed?
Yes.
From what, 10 to 12?
Well, that sounds like it wasn't our choice anyway.
It went from 9,000 to 12,000.
Statewide.
Statewide.
We didn't have a choice in that either.
Now, they've changed it so that each board can decide whether they want to change their COLA base or not. And it has to be in thousand dollar increments. So, it could be, okay, this year we're going to go 13, 14, 15, you know? Or it could be every other year. It depends on the board and how they voted and how, you know, their city council or their town government decided to allow it or not. So, you know, some started off at just a thousand dollar increments. Some of them jumped right directly to where they want it to be. So, it's not something that the state is mandating anymore, saying...
Right. They mandated the 12.
I have a question for the personnel director. What do we tell people when they retire in terms of...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. These are your benefits. Don't let the door hit you in the back. What kind of things do we tell them about their retirement?
They shouldn't be telling them much because they're supposed to come to me to find out what their benefits are going to be.
Exactly.
The only thing that they deal with personnel office is with their insurance.
Sure.
Because sometimes we don't even know someone's retiring. They'll typically go see Tina, sometimes for a year before or months before, and discuss it and then retire. So, we don't know.
So, until I get their paperwork, I don't notify anyone because it's not up to me.
So, you calculate a figure for somebody and say, this is, this is going to be your retirement?
Correct.
Let's, give me a number. Some labor, labor.
It doesn't matter.
They're all different. They're based on percentages.
It's based on three different things. It's your age, how many years of service, and your three highest consecutive years of salary. So, your three highest could be your last three years. Your three highest could be five, six years.
Right.
It depends, you know? You could be...
But you give somebody a number.
Correct.
Well, they, no, no, that is the number, first question they ask.
How much, how much will the check be?
And that's how they know, when will I get to this amount so I can retire? Because, you know, the max is 80% of your salary. So, there's people, you know, that are 30%. They're probably not going to run out the door to retire right now because 30% of your retirement. And then when you're talking about public safety, it's their base. It's not, it doesn't include overtime. I mean, their incentive is in it, but there's all different groups. Like, our group is just flat, whatever the pay plan people make. Or like the DPW, their overtime isn't in it. So, it's their, you know, their regular rate. And people that work here a long time try to get to the 80%, but there's a lot of people that will never get anywhere near that. So, they're all different.
This affects the teachers too, right? Everybody?
No, teachers are...
Not the teachers with us, no, because they're members of the state retirement board.
Teachers we...
It would affect the paraprofessionals.
Was there a 13, Tina?
Well, we don't have custodians. Oh, custodians.
Teachers, I mean statewide, all teachers statewide are under the state retirement, which is 13%.
Yeah. Who else besides the custodians?
13,000.
Secretaries.
The base, the base is 13,000. It went from, I want to say it went from 12 to 13 within the last couple of years. It hasn't been a long time.
For the mass teachers?
Yes. It was kind of after this, when they opened it up.
Right. When we first brought it forward was when it was allowed to...
Allowed to happen. And I think the state, both the state workers and the teachers went to 13.
The following year.
My only fear on this is if we go to 14, they don't want to come back to bite us if the investments go down and we have more unfunded liability because we increased the base. On the other hand, it's only giving them an extra five bucks a month. Is that generally everybody?
It gives us a little leeway. With, are allowed to go out to 2040. We don't want to go that far. We were able to go, this last actuarial that we had, we went from 2032, 203?
To 2028.
Down to 2028. And it also, our unfunded liability is lower than it was and we were able to shorten the years. So, if something drastic happens, not going to, it doesn't. We can extend our schedule a little bit. We'd rather not, but we can extend the schedule a little bit.
Oh, which will help us absorb that?
Right.
If something happened.
Right.
So, the maximum year you could go out is 40?
It's 2040.
24. I know you don't want to do it. No, I realize that.
You know, that would be painful.
I'm not really...
I don't think, I don't think that would be a recommendation that they would want to go for. And they certainly like shorting up the years. We have other, we have other retirement benefits that are unfunded at this point that we need to deal with. So, we can't, I don't believe it's responsible of the city to extend the payment to the retirement board's unfunded liability while not being able to truly address the other retirement benefits that are coming, well, that are not mandated to be funded yet, but will be.
For example?
Other post-employment retiree benefits, i.e. healthcare.
If we get mandated to fund it. What we're funding?
No.
So, to turn, to turn the healthcare from a current pay-as-you-go plan to an unfunded liability plan, that's what you're suggesting will happen with healthcare? Yes.
Is that a state law though? That's not our choice.
It hasn't been mandated yet, but there's a reason that they're making us report it.
Right. They're looking at it.
Well, guys, there's two things that are on my mind. One, it doesn't sound like it's a lot of money per retiree. Number two, we haven't done it since 97. And number three, 2010, we said no. So, I, but on the other hand, there's a hell of a lot of towns that haven't increased at all. I mean, I could go to 13, but...
Tina, not that we necessarily want to go to 13, but that's not, if, say, we've only said we would fund to 13, there's still, go ahead.
I think that would be a board discussion. I don't think I have the authority to say yes, no, or maybe.
But it would, I guess what I'm saying, we're already funding it. So, for two years, you could give the 13, but that's not saying that the other thousand, when I say thousand, the other, they have to be off the...
That goes off the unfunded liability.
Right. But if you say 13, it's going to be 13.
Forever.
Forever, right.
Right. Instead of 14, which is a little less.
And I think that's something that has to be discussed at the board level is to how that, you know...
How that functions, but we make the choice whether it's 13 or 14. We're making that.
Or are we making a choice that it'd be 14 or 12? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's 12 if we don't move.
Well, I mean, I get the feeling, and again, I'm a little, you know, we talk a lot of the process here. Sounds like the board makes the decision of 14. They want to go for a 14 increase and that's actually put in the budget, correct? At least for two years.
Well, put in their budget.
In their budget, which you're obligated to fund for at least two years, whether it goes to a COLA or whether it goes to the unfunded liability. You're mandated to do that. But it would ultimately be up to the board whether they wanted to give the 13, if that's all we were saying. Again, you want to take one more?
They could deny it.
I don't know. I would, they have a lot of...
If we say we...
I don't know if Tina knows that.
That would be, I don't, I think, I think if, I don't know what the, I'm looking at Tina because I don't know what the process is. The board voted for 14. I'm sure that...
Versus nothing.
Versus nothing, that 13 is better. But I don't know if then we have to vote again and if it will be delayed a year or not. Like, I'm not sure about the rules of the retirement board.
We should have the ability by choice as a council to make an amendment to that.
I mean, I can't imagine...
We can't, in other words, it's not 14 or nothing. It could be 14 or 12. It could be 13 in the middle. I think that's a fair compromise if, I'm not sure I'm there yet.
Right.
Mine might be at 14. But on the other hand, it doesn't, I mean, we're being presented with this. Legally, we have to vote to approve it. We could approve 13 or 14, I think. And the board can decide how that process works for them, I guess. But if we say 13, it's 13 until you come back in a few years and say, can we go to 15 or go to 14 again? I don't know.
I think the top was 15 for more of the board members, if we remember correctly. One, I...
Well, it sounds like a lot of people have, well, you could go to Hampton County and 18.
Yeah. Or you could graduate at a thousand dollar increments. I mean, I don't, I don't know. That wasn't...
Again, there's no rush. It's July 1st. I mean, we could take another meeting if Tina can maybe see what, what would be the impact to the board. Again, and again, I'm not trying to put you, I'm not having, putting you on the spot. I mean, I'm...
What do you mean the impact? We know that the impact is, what the impact?
No, no, I meant from a standpoint of their administrative process of, in other words, the board, if they only get half.
I guess we'd have to vote again, right?
But again, I'm not saying, because I do agree a little with Dan. I'm not saying I want to go to 13. I want to go to 13. I just wanted, I just brought that up as...
What does it mean?
What does it mean?
I mean, it's half, it's half the cost of the base increasing. I mean, it's obvious. That's what it means.
Well, for two years, that's what it would be. I think I would have to, have to ask the actuarialist what it would be if we dropped it.
And then after that...
I don't think they would change, because we've already voted, we've already, we've already accepted the, we've already accepted this.
Right.
Well, it means to me...
Going forward after... The rest would go to the unfunded liability.
It's difficult to say. I mean, it's, well, it would be the same as if they voted zero.
If they voted no, it doesn't happen, and it goes to the unfunded liability.
It goes to the unfunded liability next two years, and then nothing happens two years from now, but if we go to 13, it stays at 13 forever. So you're getting that even beyond the two years. And it's...
But then we wouldn't know what the numbers were until two years after the next actuarialist.
Okay, but you still get that increase. It's an increase in the base by 1,000 instead of 2,000.
I think it's a good question, Wes. You know, that's why I'm not an actuarialist.
I mean, this is so complicated. I mean, I don't want someone saying, you gave, you gave, I keep hearing this years and years, the Salkman, years ago, they gave everything away, you know, to the employees. What did they give away? I don't want to hear that about this.
No, I...
If it's only $5 a month, then I'm ready to vote 14 right now, but then, on the other hand, I also heard $1,000 over 14 years, so that's scary, too. So I'm, I don't know. I just don't know. You want to think about it?
Well, again, I think we should take one more meeting and not have you come back, Tina. You don't have to come back, and I think it's really for us to, between the three of us, to actually think it out between ourselves of whether we want to fund the 14, we want to try to send them a 13, or we want to keep, I don't think anyone, well, maybe JP, you ever really said, but I know Dan and I don't at least appear to...
I will go at least 13.
Right.
I will, I will increase. You should know this, it's going to go up, whether it's 13 or 14. I'm leaning towards 14 right now, but I really don't know.
But I think we could take a meeting, because I, I could, I could do either. You know, I could do either. I don't know what your feeling is, JP, if you want another meeting till we think it...
Well, how do you feel right now, David? You haven't said? Say something. I think I've asked a lot of questions.
No, you've asked a lot. That's why I said I didn't know.
Well, I know, but you feel like a compromise is necessary or what? I don't know.
When you look at it in terms of the employee, it's, it has a $14,000 retirement base, and let's say they have a $14,000 retirement. The COLA on the whole 14 is not a lot of money. The COLA on the extra, on the 12 isn't a lot, the extra two, we decided was $5 per month. You look at that and you go, my gosh, how do people live? You know? How do you survive?
They're struggling.
If somebody's making $45,000 in retirement, they get a COLA on 32,000.
No, no, 14.
They get a COLA on 14,000.
12 now, 14 if...
They don't get any COLA beyond that?
No.
Oh, I totally misunderstood this. I thought it was...
You were looking at the reverse.
14 was the, was the beginning of their COLA.
No.
You know, minus, subtract that from, but that's not it. They only get a COLA on 14.
14,000 on 12.
If they're making more than 14.
Yes.
12.
Right now.
Right now, it would be 14. Right now, their maximum is $360 a year, period. The people that are under 12...
COLA.
Correct. The people that are under 12, ten less than that, get 3% on whatever they're earning.
Say they're making $6,000, they get 3% on the $6,000. Say they're making $12,000, their retirement is 12,000, they get the 3% on the 12.
I think that there's 15...
Anything over it is no COLA.
If they have a $50,000 set of retirement...
57 people that are under 12. So it's not going to affect those people whatsoever.
Right, but the people...
How many people, Tina?
57. Out of 150 semi-retirees that we have, there's 57 that are earning $12,000.
How about the rest?
Yeah, how many total do we have, Tina?
We have about 153.
So, so one-third is, it doesn't affect at all?
Right. We have 10 people that are between the, um...
12 and 14.
Yeah, 12 and 14. Actually, I have mine, and it looks longer, it's like 15,500.
How does it affect someone if they're 14? If it goes up to 14 and they're only getting 12?
It doesn't. That's what she just said.
It doesn't at all.
It'll still give them the, instead of 360, they'll get...
They'll get some.
No, 14, you're right.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. Between the 10 people between 12 and 14...
They don't get an increase. They get their COLA, but they don't get much of an increase.
They'll get a little, they'll get a little bit more than the 360 because it's over the $12,000.
So if you're making 13, they're going to get half of that.
Right.
They're going to get 30 rather than 60.
But, but what I'm understanding now is it's 14, period.
$3, yeah.
14 if you're making...
So it's $365 if you're making more than 14?
Actually, it'll be, if you're making more than 14, it'll be 420.
420.
Because it's $5 a month more.
Let's, guys, let's vote on this on 14. That's ridiculous. I misunderstood this totally.
I was just going at the opposite way.
I would do it the opposite way. I thought, you know, somebody's making 50, they're getting it on the whole thing. They're getting more.
No, 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 no.
No.
And social security, they get 3%, if they get 3% or 1%...
It's 3%.
Right, right.
So here, it's just an on the COLA base, period.
And I think they got 1.7 or something.
$4.20, I'm ready to vote tonight, now that I hear this. I've just...
I'm glad, I'm glad we got, we got a little further.
Because it's...
I'm still, I'm still looking at Melissa, and I'm saying, here's a retirement board person who voted in favor of it, and it's, and the finance director of the city who's sitting here with like TNT going, boom, this is going to be a million dollars. And that's how I feel tonight. I think I feel...
Conflicted.
As Melissa had voted in her retirement board meeting and here before the city council saying, this is a real problem for the city because it's a million.
I'm just going to say that I, I voted on the retirement board with my conscience and what I feel is the right thing to do, because I do understand my retirement benefits. Not all municipal employees do, but I know that the further away I get from my retirement, the less I make, because you can't...
You voted with a heart.
You can't keep up with inflation, and that's just a reality. So even with this increase, in, you know, 20 years from retirement, I'm going to eat cat food or walk in front of a bus. I mean, that's...
Hopefully, you have other retirement plans.
Right.
Hopefully, you have prepared, but a lot of people...
Some don't.
That are getting an $8,000 retirement...
We're talking less than 60 bucks a year per retirement.
So, so that's how I vote.
Not even all of them.
Is it expensive? Of course it is. The reason it's expensive is that it's a change, quite honestly, my benefit. It benefits me, you know, so it's a conflict I have on the retirement board that I will benefit from this change, assuming that I retire from these candidates.
But it's not just Melissa, everybody on the retirement board.
I'd say most everybody on the board.
It's the same thing. You know, you have different reps, but they're all in it.
Right.
There's not anybody that's not.
There's one. There's always one that's not.
Right. I have a new question.
And so...
Please, later.
So is it expensive? Yes, but we're not paying the $1,000 today, and I, um, it's, if you average, it's $76,000, like they said, next year, it averages over the course of this period about 100 grand a year more. Does that come at the cost of something else? It absolutely does. Those are just, those are just the facts.
100 grand more a year, we have to give out.
On an average, yeah. It goes 76, 80, 85, 89, 90, 202, you know, it ratchets up a little bit every year because...
I don't see, I guess I totally misunderstand, because it's only 100, less than 100 people, $60 more a year. I'm just going to add up to 100 grand.
But it, because it changes the unfunded liability...
So what we're paying down?
Oh, I see. It's a compounded formula.
It adds to our liability.
It's a very complicated formula. It's not as simple as 60 bucks a year.
It didn't add to 2,000, 2,000 of the liability.
And then it changes the normal cost, like I said, 2%, which averages between, you know, in the, in the teens, you know, per year, because the assumption is that the people retiring today are, have, have higher wages than the people retiring 20 years ago.
And they live longer.
Therefore, more people 20 years from now, or even 14 years from now, will be eligible for the full COLA.
So that's how it's compounding itself?
Yes.
Because it's not just the people today, it's the base plus more people, plus more salary, all of these things.
The more salary...
Increase in salary.
Well, the increase in salary to the, it almost doesn't matter if I have a very, say I retire and I make, like you said, 45 in my retirement. I'd have to be, you know, I'd have to put in a lot of time and have a pretty decent salary in order to get to that, but my COLA will only ever be based on whatever the increase you decide. It will only be, ever be based on the 12 or 14. So that 3% may equate to someone who's making in the 40s to closer to a 1% COLA, or even less than that for, you know, some of the, you know, chiefs or something like that who retire from here with, with, you know, good retirements. But the further you get from that retirement, that's all you have, is that COLA base. You might as well have made 15 at some point, because your increase is based on, on this very small number, whether it be 12 or 14.
But compounded over 14 years, it's 100 grand more a year. That's an important figure. The $4.20 per employee is on one side of the coin for me, and I'm back to being conflicted because of this, and it's 100 grand. This is, I think we wait.
We'll take one.
And I'll tell you this, when we go to the council with this, you ain't going to do it, my me. They're going to, they're going to...
Is there a deadline, Tina?
There isn't a deadline. Well, at least, at least by...
July.
Before the next year.
No, I mean, there's not like a January deadline.
No.
Well, Dan Nagin is really good at moving us, so we'll get it off our plate.
The funds have been budgeted.
Right.
Not us.
No, not ours. Their funds have been...
Yes. What they want us to pay, yes.
But who goes to...
We have to, we have to pay that.
Yeah.
Who goes to... This vote decides who goes to, either the employees or the...
And the actuarialist did not extend their schedule, because he says it's better to pay for it upfront than to extend your schedule further out.
I agree.
And, and, because it could have brought us having up three or four years, and he said, I do not recommend that. So, you know, of course, we've got to go by what our actuarialist says as well, so...
Okay.
The real, the real problem here is that we were paying, for years, the city and the state and everyone in the world was paying, at least in the, in the United States as far as I know, was paying for retirement benefits with current dollars. They never set aside money. The municipalities never set aside any money to pay for future retirement benefits. The employees set aside some money toward their retirement benefits, but this, but the employer never did.
But any employers?
Any employer, whether it's the state, county, federal...
Or private. Or private.
Or private.
You know, that's what's the whole big thing. When they had to fund, that's when companies, a lot of the companies wouldn't bankrupt because they had to...
They had the unfunded liability.
Throw out their, their retirement, that our promise to them, to make sure that an employee, when he retired, that money is there for them.
If, if, if those funds have been paid for in the past, it'd be a lot easier for us to sit here and say, okay, let's do a COLA.
Yeah.
But that's not the case.
Yes.
Let's take another meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's take another.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you very much.
I will pass.
If you want to come back, that'd be great for you.
I don't think you would, to me, Tina, if you want to come back, um...
You might have another question, Tina.
It would be at, um, hang on, let me check my little...
Mine's on the table.
I think...
Did you say there were third?
Third is the full council.
Oh, that's right, so that'll...
It'll be the 10th. December 10th.
That's my mother's birthday. The day for mine.
I am not available for that.
December 10th?
Well, this isn't...
You want to move it to another date?
There's nothing that week, because if I'm not at North Record or in the hospital, I'm going to work as a major's back surgery, so I'm either there or at the, that whole week is shut.
So the 10th, or...
Well, you guys can make a decision. I'm off the hook.
Dan's unavailable for that one, so...
Well, hey, guys, if we, well, we have until July. We can, if this is...
Why don't we, we'll let you know, I'll let you know, Tina, when we're going to put it on the agenda. I mean, it'll be on the agenda, but I'll let you know when we're going to take it up.
I'd like to also get other councils here.
I was going to, that's what I was going to suggest, is that...
Because this is so complicated.
Really is the kind of...
You need to hear it.
You really need to be at the...
They should be here.
Hearing, more of the discussions.
And you can see how...
I mean, we could set a special meeting at some point after that week.
Well, what's our council?
And invite the council.
10, 17.
17. We could set something that week, just for a special finance meeting, just for the council, any other council.
We have to tell the counselors, I think, at the next meeting.
On the next meeting.
Next meeting, the 3rd, you should say, look, this is very complicated. You need to make an educated decision, and we're having a hard time. We've had two meetings.
Why don't we, um...
I think we should get them.
And we can ask, and we can suggest, and at least...
And then if they don't come, then...
The discussion will take place at the full council. Fine.
They should be able to support it.
Now, would you be available that following week in the, the, our regular meeting?
You mean do it Tuesday?
Like do it a Tuesday, or Thursday, or Monday of that following week? A special meeting, just for this?
I am available that week any night.
And we'll invite any other counselors that want to come. I don't know if we'll get any, but we'll...
Well, we should tell the counselor.
On the next meeting, at the next full meeting.
What data, looking at, yeah?
The other thing we could do, it's called a special meeting in the council. I have the president call it just to talk about this, and then they have to come, you know, have to come, that's like, the full council is debating a decision on this, because they need to be well informed. It's very complicated if, retirement, I'm going up against retirement now, it is so hard for me to understand. What do I do? Do I annuity? Do I take it all out? What the hell do I do?
Option A, B, C?
And now you're asking me to make a decision for the city that could cost the city a million bucks over time, and I'm still not understanding, wait a minute, it's only $4.20 a month? Wait a minute.
$5.
$5 a month? Okay, it's $5 a month!
20 a year.
20 a year? Okay.
So you're looking at dates, and you'll let...
Well, I'll let everybody know, because we're either going to have a special finance meeting just for this, or a special...
I think your meeting on the 10th should deal with anything but this.
$60 a year. $60 a year, we're talking about. Per employee, if they're getting...
80 some of the people.
Who are getting their COLA based on 14,000, if that were the case.
Right, if they, they make 14 or more, it's a $60 increase.
And it's 100 and...
It's 100 over time.
I have 150 semi-retirees, but there's only 80, 83 that's qualified for.
With $5,000 of actual appropriation, that's it, 5,700.
If you retire between certain dates, you're not eligible for the first COLA.
So it's going to compound them?
Yes, I understand.
Because you have to look at it with, you know, people living on all that. All right, well, I understand.
So we'll let you know, Tina.
I understand a little, I, I do feel I understand a lot more than I did before.
It will not...
Don't ask me to repeat it.
It will not be the week of the...
There's a test, I'm going to fail.
It will not be the week of the 10th, because counselor Rist is, can't make that, and we're going to make him be part of the...
She's going, they're going to make me vote on it.
But we may try to have something that, that following week of the 17th, December 17th, someday that week, but it won't be on the Wednesday, would have to be a...
Isn't the full, the full council on Wednesday?
Right, so we would have to have a meeting on a day other than Wednesday.
If we wanted to bring it to the full council on the 17th, but my opinion, we get, we have a meeting, say, we could have a meeting on the following week, because it's Christmas Eve, so we wouldn't do that. If we had a meeting on the 16th, and it was purely for this, that would be welcome.
Right, and I think we can...
I think the councilors really should come to it.
Tell all the counselors and...
And everybody tries to explain it again to all the other councilors. And then we, then we set a public hearing maybe for the first week, and we have another meeting prior to that, January meeting, maybe, in which we discuss it finally and vote on it. it takes a while.
Let's, uh, do we wanna try to set a meeting for that next week, or that next?
I can do Tuesday the sixteenth. It's up to you guys.
This is December sixteenth, right? Do I have that right?
Right, but this would be just for the retirement.
I'm gonna go get my phone.
Uh, well, that's two, no, two thousand.
Well, why don't we, why don't we...
Can you do Tuesday? I have nothing to the sixteenth.
Far away, yet, like the ground street, find you.
You have something anyway.
I have something, but...
Good.
There you go.
So it's a good possibility it would be the sixteenth.
Well, that's what we're...
Yes.
Okay, sixty. We'll tentatively make it for the sixteenth.
The only thing on that agenda, unless there's an emergency, would be the...
It's gonna be this. We're not gonna put anything else on.
We're gonna try and get the councilors to come.
And I, I will, you know, ask them all on the third to come.
Tuesday.
So that's good with you, Melissa. We can, we got, we can work around.
She hates going all these meetings. I'm sorry, this is hard.
Thanks, Tina.
If we provide wine from the council budget, well, we have to do supplemental appropriation.
Can't do it. Stand outside for a few minutes, maybe.
Twelve sixteen for a special...
Hope my wife will be back for dinner at seven o'clock. We talked too much.
No, we had, we have to be out of here at seven, so we gotta...
Well, we could do one more.
Have a nice Thanksgiving, Tina.
That's why I'm gonna ask the mayor.
Stay happy birthday to your mom.
Because I promised Barbara, because the bike trailer is coming in here at seven o'clock.
So which of these three is the most important one to do? Did we set any public hearings for anything?
I've set a public, I don't have them on here. I've set the public hearings for the stabilization creation.
None of these.
None of these. These have, we have not dealt with any of these from the eighteen...
You could vote on them on the tenth without me.
Correct.
If you don't get to them. If you wanna set a public hearing for the seventeenth.
For the seventeenth, then we can get them all approved. Is there any, uh, mayor that of the eighteen, the trailer, the...
Gas meter.
I, I talked to the planner, and she's, I don't think hers is a, a real hurry on the map because she wants to try to go to some type of a public process. I was talking to the planner today, and she's talking about a possible public process before to show people what the map is. Because I think what she doesn't wanna do is create a map and then have people come back and say that this isn't right, that isn't right. So...
That's smart.
So that one we can, uh, but I don't know about like the gas meter or the...
The gas meter is not...
I'm pretty sure.
I thought that was, um...
It's for the generator.
I know, but I thought that was the one that we had a discussion on last week.
Yeah, there's, it doesn't need to be upgraded for.
All right, well, then, if you, if you wouldn't mind...
Well, let me say something.
The sixty-one, sixty-two for the gas meter, because we already purchased out of free cash last year the generator, and they can't use it. And as you see, we, yeah, as you see...
Well, the next, the only time you can vote on these three is December seventeenth anyway. Even if we discuss it tonight or not.
Oh, you mean, oh, I know what you mean.
We can't, we can't. He has to set public hearings.
You've got a schedule for public hearings at the next meeting.
So the next meeting of finance is the tenth, which I won't be at the tenth, but you guys could all vote on these.
The ninety-four, the...
These don't look complicated to me.
No, not me.
Well, the tenth, the tenth is the meeting that's regularly scheduled. The sixteenth is for the retirement. So, what I'm trying to say is, even if we voted on all three of these tonight, they wouldn't get on the council's agenda till the seventeenth.
Right.
But we could certainly take up one and try to go through as many as we can, right? We got ten minutes.
Yeah, ten minutes, sure.
Why don't we just at least talk about the gas meter, and I'll definitely set a public hearing for that on the third.
Perfect. And that is pretty straightforward. They purchased, I'm pretty sure we're not even double checking under, free cash was one of the few things.
Yeah, free cash.
One of the few things we did last year, a generator for the highway department, so that whenever we have a storm, they're not, you know, like, without power. And so, but what happened is when it came in, and it's there, it's there, it's, it's, you know, on the cement slab, but, um, they, they need to upgrade the gas meter. They can't use it.
Right.
Until they do this.
So Columbia can get their money.
Yeah. So, um, if you could do that one, that would be great. We could get going on that because it sounds like winter's coming fast.
I don't see a reason not to, not to proceed with that.
No, we should do this. But all I'm saying is you should set a public hearing for all of these because...
Yeah, I think we can.
Put them on the agenda.
So I want to...
Why don't we approve this one? Do you, we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve the supplemental appropriations of six thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars for the upgrade of the gas meter at the highway department garage. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Did I hear you say that they can't, they can't, I just wanna recommend...
They can't use it.
They can't use this until the meter's repaired.
That's right.
So we need to...
Upgrade it.
Until it's upgraded.
Exactly.
So I'll definitely set a public hearing for this one on the third.
Okay.
For the seventeenth.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I hope you will set all of them.
Yes. Now, uh, the only one I'm not sure of is the map.
Well, why don't we wait on that until the tenth get planning here?
Uh, we passed on the trailer last time. Again, I was just gonna, uh, again, I don't have a problem with...
I don't have a problem with any of these guys.
...supplying with a trailer. But if you have questions, JP, we certainly, what Dan is suggesting is I don't think there's a problem if I set a public hearing on, on the eighteen thousand for the trailer.
For the, for the seventeenth?
Yes, public hearing on the, I'll set it for the seventeenth. That's the soonest it could be at the full council. And we can either take it up a little tonight, or we can do it on the tenth.
I think it's cut and dry.
I'm not sure I can make the tenth.
Well, if you can't make the tenth, and Dan can...
Dan can't make the tenth. Maybe we need to make another date if we need, if, if, if we can't.
I think we could vote on this. I, I'm looking at this now. Until we buy this trailer, the sewer water, you have to hire a contractor to move the equipment.
Right.
We need to do this. We're hiring somebody to do this.
I have no problem because we put that over the last week.
And this is coming out of enterprise.
Enterprise, I believe.
Yeah, enter, right.
I don't have any problem with this.
And I'll entertain a motion on the eighteen thousand.
I'll move, yeah, we do it.
Okay, we have a motion, second to supplemental appropriation from retained earnings to sewer capital trailer, the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. And I'll set a public hearing for this one on, uh, December third.
All right, well, let's do the generator. We have, well, we did the generator.
Yes, just the motor repair.
Nine, two, five, five. The lift.
Up's the storm.
Quoted moving old lift to another bay and purchasing installing a larger lift. The cost of the purchase and installation of the larger lift is eight thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Additional cost of a thousand will be necessary to remove the electrical. Therefore, department public reports request the amount of nine five hundred appropriated. I guess they're putting in two lifts, so it's gonna be the old one.
The problem is that, you know, again, these are, these aren't new requests. Um, this is a safety request that they were hoping for last year out of free cash.
Okay.
Um, the lifts are different size, so they, um, they, they need a lift that actually services the vehicle. So they're trying to maneuver without the right lift. So that's what this would be. And it would be an additional.
Some of the lifts are not big enough for the...
For the vehicle. So they're maneuvering without the proper safety lift, which is an ever good thing. So what it is, an additional lift.
I don't have my paper in front of me. What's this coming out of?
Uh, this is coming out of free cash.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, this would be for...
Let me ask you something, Mayor Melissa. If we, we established the five hundred and twenty thousand capital improvement, but that's for a long-term view of capital. So your free cash, you're gonna use it now for some of these smaller things.
Some of them we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to use some.
Well, we have plenty of free cash left, right? Even after those two big ones?
Nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, so you're gonna use it. You're still using it to fund some of these emergency capitals. And this one was delayed.
And, and, and you're still used to the, um, fire chief coming. So, you know, there's a lot, you, you know the list of capital requests.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of moving this. It sounds like it's a safety issue.
It is.
Safety issues are, to me, we gotta do safety.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second to approve, approve the supplemental, or recommend approval of supplemental appropriation to the full council of nine thousand two hundred and fifty-five for free cash. All, oh, any further discussion? None, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll set a public hearing for this one on the third.